It's five o'clock and I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please, Lisa.
Director Soder, here.
Director Rice, here.
Director Kraus, here.
Director Laffey, here.
Director Casey?
Here.
Board Chair, uh.
Here. Meeting's called to order, we have a forum. Our next item is public comment and we have no public comment tonight. Item three is recognition of any guests and visitors and we have Mr. Nick Farrell. Who would guess us?
Hello. Just hand out a few handouts here. Is everyone? My name is Nick Farrell, this is Matt Bower, and we're one of the two owners of Dwight Sponsorm Insurance Company. So we wanted to first start out and say thanks for allowing us to attend your board meeting and take the time to introduce ourselves in our company. A little bit about Dwight Sponsorm Company, we're a locally owned insurance company based out of Duluth. It's been established in eighteen eighty-nine. I guess one of our most recent accomplishments for Dwight Sponsorm Company is we were just awarded the twenty twenty-two Minnesota Independent Agency of the Year. We've been, Matt's one of the owners, he's a third generation owner. His grandpa owned the company, his dad did, and then Matt and his brother have taken it on since, what?
Two thousand and eighteen.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Brother bought it and Nick became an owner in January here with us, so.
Little bit about me, I'm a Chisholm grad, graduated in twenty thirteen. I went down to Duluth and got my accounting and finance degree from the College of Saint Scholastica. I spent the next number of years working in private accounting and public accounting at local industries around Duluth. And then I got into the insurance industry, so Matt, I'll let you explain your background a little bit.
I am a Duluth native, never left there, which I kind of did at some point, but so I graduated from Duluth Marshall and I graduated from the College of Saint Scholastica with management and marketing. And basically I have always been in the insurance field since a little kid, taking along with my dad and my grandfather. And so there's a lot of experience there. And one of the things that we are trying to grow within our company is the school districts. We do handle the ISD twenty-one forty-two, St. Louis County School District for their insurance needs. We handle a few others in the local area of Duluth and Northern Wisconsin. But we just thought we'd try to get our foot in the door and see if we could introduce ourselves and have Nick kind of work in a school district with us.
Yeah, so I don't know, I know you probably renewals up on seven-one, don't know if you're looking for insurance quotes or who you're with, but obviously our goal would be to, you know, try to save you money, look at all your insurance needs and provide the right coverage, offer advice. Kind of go from there. Any questions for us?
What kind of insurance are we talking about?
Yeah, so we do all lines, so we can do general liability, property, workers' comp, auto. Pretty much all lines of the insurance that you'd need for the school district. Like Matt said, our agency has over forty-plus years working with school districts insurance needs. So we do have quite a bit of experience in our office. There's sixteen of us, right? In our office, we do have one agent that's a certified CSR customer.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a CSR, Emma's Certified School Risk Management. She got that designation specifically for handling our school districts. We do represent three of the five largest carriers in the state of Minnesota that write school districts, so EMC, Employers Mutual Company. They probably write about eighty-five percent of the districts in Minnesota, we have a contract with them. Liberty Mutual and then Selective Insurance as well. And Hanover and Gallagher are other players in the insurance field, which we now have a contract, so those would not be marked as for us if that's where you're currently with or have had them passed.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. What, what type of insurance are you, are you handling with twenty-one forty-two?
We handle all their lines, all their lines, yeah. So we do their property, which is Harvard class, because they have real schools. So we handle their property, their auto professional liability, it's called Mindbackers Insurance, that's going to be your, you know, board directors and then sexual molestation.
If the school district or, I'll just use twenty-one forty-two as an example, if they have a question, is there one person within your agency who they go to?
Yep, yep, so it would be, it would be Nick or myself, depending on how, how things played out, and then we do have, it would be Jalen, is her name, and that's who has the CSR. So it's just, it's, we're, we're a large agency, but we bring a small local service into it. You're always going to see a person if there's ever an issue.
All your renewals, we come up and go through at board meetings with you guys.
That, that's the one thing that kind of sets us apart is even though we are a large agency, we're very personalized, so it's, it's, we like to be hands-on with our accounts. You're never going to get an operating machine that answers, press one for Matt, press one for Nick, no. You're, you're going to call and the secretary's going to answer and he will be transferred to us.
So you're looking, are you looking to quote our insurance other than health insurance? That's what you'd like to do?
Correct, yes, property casualty.
Property casualty.
Yes.
Well, I would guess that if we, if we entertain a bit from you guys, you should send it to Superintendent Norman and let him take a look at it.
Okay. And who would be the primary contact then to gather like all the insurance information that we would need to put together?
Our business manager is Alex Kazer, me is the business manager for Hiving.
Okay.
Yeah, and we actually met with Alex last year.
Yep.
For Hiving as well, but it was, it was too late, I think they got their, their renewal and their shots.
Yeah, it was a last minute thing.
Yeah, so. Which all, which all the school districts redo seven-one, so it's a busy time.
Yeah.
So, and I think that was like mid-June, but we did go up and meet with Alex and.
And Rick.
Rick Aldridge, so.
How about cyber?
Yeah.
You go after cyber as well, yes.
So, so most, most of the insurance carriers have a cyber policy built in or coverage built in. It's not as robust, if the district didn't want a separate one, we do have options for that as well. But so cyber and EPLI are probably the two hot topics in the last ten years for insurance. EPLI is Employee Practice Liability, that's criminal determination, sexual harassment. So, and I would say those are where we see most of the clients besides property and auto.
Are any of the buildings for Chisholm School District on the historical site?
Not at this time.
They're not, okay.
That's a big thing too.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'll just give you the warrant, it's very expensive to insure them, so. It might, it might seem nice to be on that list, but it's just, it's a big bill.
And we are building another one.
Yes.
When's that starting, twenty twenty-four?
So we're hoping to have the doors open fall of twenty-five.
Okay, okay.
And then would the VON be gone or?
It's up to the board for a future date and discussion.
Who, who is the building in the new school?
A company called Injensa.
Injensa, okay.
And your renewals are on a yearly basis?
Yes, everything's annual, all insurance is annual. And it would be all seven-one, that's just the nature of these, so. So we just wanted to get in front of you guys sooner than later, and you know, it's, it takes us a while to put a quote together and to, to market it efficiently and properly.
So then you have to tell Alex to, to go ahead and give information or, yeah?
I don't see any reason why not.
Oh, I think it's great.
Are you, are you guys still insured with, through Ballard Agents?
Yeah.
Okay, because I did call on Simone Zunich about, I want to say like three years ago, but it's probably more like eight years ago.
Yeah, she's been.
Yeah, so, and she's mentioned at the time that you guys were with Ballard and had been with Ballard for a long time, so.
Where are they based at?
North Dakota.
Okay. Any questions for these fine gentlemen?
Thank you for taking the time.
No, thanks for having us, and yeah.
Yeah, next to the driver.
Yeah, no, if any follow-up, I guess if there's, should I work with Lisa then or? We'll get in contact if you want to proceed.
Okay, sounds good.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, we appreciate it, yeah, take care.
Nice to see you.
Moving on to item four, we approved the agenda, we have a couple changes. Under Personnel, item B, we are going to pull that motion to approve the hiring of Melissa Popple as Avian exchange. And item C is a motion to approve the hiring of Ebony Johnson with her new amended contract. Other than that, I think we're okay. So entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So far.
Motion is by Jackie and support by Shelley. Comments or questions? All those in favor? I oppose. What's Carrie? Item five is reports and Superintendent Norman is going to do most of the talking tonight, so.
Yes. I would like to loop up to number three, Barb Darlin, who's planning on coming here from Darlin Marketing Solutions and Communications. She, I've had a couple meetings with her and her group regarding post-referendum communications, talking about school naming and branding and all of those things as well. There was a previous company that helped with us in the past, did get a quote from them. This quote from the Darlin Group was twenty-five to fifty cents on the dollar of what the other quote was. So she wanted to apologize, she couldn't make it, but when I did talk to her today, it sounded like it was pretty rough towards Duluth weather-wise. She's willing to come up if you'd like to meet her and need any more information. So I just wanted to touch on that, so she wasn't able to make it, she did communicate with me today regarding that, so. Any questions on that before I begin my report? So a couple updates that the staff has had opportunities at all sites to speak with ARI and Injensa to give feedback. They toured Grand Rapids Elementary and Rock Ridge Elementary and Hivinger's Childhood. Now there'll be a follow-up loop with Injensa and ARI to, there's a shared document from these two sites giving feedback on pros, cons, suggestions, feedback they heard. Mike and I grabbed a custodian at Rock Ridge and said, you're in the trenches, tell us all we need to know on, if you were to redo it, what would this look like, and got some really good feedback from them. So we did have a meeting last Friday and we shared that information as well with ARI and Injensa, so they'll be looping back the staff to get additional feedback after they had the opportunity to go see those sites. Been about a year, I've been trying to figure out the mystery of the media tower at the VON. I finally have received the copies of the agreement, I can share or print a copy if anyone else would like it for their reading pleasure. In twenty fifteen, the school district provided them with what looks like a permanent easement, no longer collects any revenue after that time. So our local trusted attorney on the board has a copy that during her spare time, I'm sure it's going to be some exciting reading that she'll be looking at, so. Maybe she can help update the group after she learns a few things. I just breezed through it and a lot of it was lawyer language, so it'll be interesting to, to learn some more. I also did share it with our attorney as well. Tuesday on the twenty-first, the high school had a lockdown drill, it was a training exercise with the canine unit. I did get an email and a phone call regarding it, I just wanted you to know that was pre-planned and it was scheduled quite a while ahead of time, so it's also a training unit for them. So they'll bring a young dog in with an elder mature dog that's done this, and they're actually working a training exercise for themselves. So they'll plant something in a locker and work the dogs to try to find what they have planted in an open locker, so. That took place, but just so you know, that was scheduled and was planned well in advance.
And if you're dropping a child, they get in the school.
Yeah, we had the building locked down for a while while we did the drill, so.
Yeah.
Brandis is well versed on what Lisa's office looks like.
Beginning conversation last week regarding summer camps, the funding for that used to be through the IRRR. Gus, us as a district, just over about twenty-five K each on an estimate, there would be four or five districts that would participate in it. We did not have a very large turnout for our students at all, but we were the bussing hub, so we were the transportation hub for the majority of it. At this point, we don't have money in a fund to cover it, so if we did choose to move forward, it would be a general fund expenditure. Reggie from twenty-one forty-two was going to reach out to the IRRR to see if there's any appetite to continue it. We also paid someone to coordinate it and that individual no longer works in one of the districts that would be providing the summer camp, so maybe some more to follow, but right now it's kind of dead in the water from our standpoint, looking forward. Tech night tax bill, I believe there's an updated copy in your packets to take a look at, it is different than what the original one that named our district specifically, Hiving and Chisholm, it's now tweaked. The dollar amount is different, it doesn't speak directly to these districts. It does speak about the collaborative fund. Jeff Anderson said he would know more in the next week or so and would be getting back to us with more details, but you should have a copy of that to take a look at. And then lastly, Art is still making in-person appointments, they're hoping to be up and running in the month of March. They brought in a backup, brand-new server that they're working out of and they're still manually working through payroll and other things, as well as they're implementing a number of new safety protocols as far as safety and security. So that was my, and the victory questions for me.
So it, it sounds like the new language in the tax bill is going to allow other districts in the area to to use this fund.
Very broad brush stroke from what I could.
Based upon the actual R and Bs recommendation and this is still live contact.
IRR and it falls under the collaborative fund, so you would have to meet the parameters of collaborative, collaborative fund.
And the chair, Rick Vina, it seems like they'll have the ultimate determination as to where these funds will go. Reading through it and in favor of the change in the language, obviously. I mean, we, we, and it's called a collaborative fund and yet we're, I mean, is eliminating one portion of the collaboration. So I don't know where their their thought processes on that, I don't know if their superintendent over there has described the tax bill to their board. Yes, we still have some collaboration in other areas and mostly in extracurricular activities, but I would certainly invite the superintendent over there and maybe their board chair to come in and talk with us or talk with you and Mr. Rock. And I'm sure you and Mr. Aldridge talk frequently, but.
He actually looped me in in the communication with Jeff Anderson, has a requested meeting coming up, so I believe I sent that to him as well.
Well, we kind of missed out on any collaborating dollars out of the last bid. And the IRR ended up giving the money to, you know, Nash Rock and Rock Ridge and every, you know, and so it just seems a little bit like there's, there's just going to be another pot of money that you don't have some sort of you know, fit their definition, you're not going to receive.
All good questions on my list of questions to ask when we do get the meeting with Jeff. He has mentioned too that we would need representatives to go down and speak again. Last time I heard at like eleven-thirty in the morning, I need you here tomorrow by eight, okay, so. I'm hoping they'll plan a little better than that this time, but is willing to go down if they need me to.
Has Mr. Anderson talked to Chair Rick Vina on, on this at all?
That I don't know, again, he had said to give him about a week to have some more information to get back to us, so.
I'd like to hear what her thoughts are.
And she was well versed in the previous proposal as well, she took part in all the district twenty-seven, twenty-eight superintendent meetings, so she was in the loop on, on some of those previous conversations.
I'm sorry. Who rewrote the language?
The author of the bill, I would imagine, and I believe that was Dave Listig.
Who was that, Liz Garrett?
Correct.
Twenty's our representative too.
He certainly claimed to be.
And there were tweaks to the previous bill right at the very end that looked parallel to some of that as well, which didn't cross the finish line and that's why we're reading this.
Anything else for Avian on the superintendent?
So I have Travis's updates, but I think he's still going to try to get here, he's at basketball practice right now. The only thing that I can touch on is the Blue Street store is open now, three sixty-five, twenty-four seven with no end date. So that was one of the tweaks, I know that recently happened. The jersey rotations that he's looking into and some recent purchased ones, they looked great, I got to see, see those in person. Not sure about the seller award recipient, we can probably speak to that better. I know we have some upcoming tournaments and events that are going on and some recent swimming events and things that closing out a season, and then the golf scramble that he's working on. But if he shows up, he can talk a little more in depth on that. Carla's updates, Starbase, March first, second, third, sixth, and seventh. Fifth grade students will be attending with their teachers, they attend each day in Duluth. Starbase is finding the next generation of leaders in science, technology, engineering, and math. They provide caring youth with innovative, hands-on, free educational opportunities in STEM subjects and help students envision the future in STEM, and it's pretty powerful stuff, we sent a group last year. It came back pretty jazzed and we're, we're excited about some of the opportunities that got to do with robots and, and other things, so. Looking, kids are looking forward to that, I've already heard a buzz about it, so that's a good thing. She said they had a good turnout in, in their conferences recently, and she said based on recent star testing, she's seeing some nice growth in our students, which is great. Another round of benchmark testing will take place at the end of the third quarter, so looking at data and looking at student progress, which are all good things. Elementary concert, both K through three and the children's, we'll have a spring sing in May. Students are practicing to get ready to get registered and get connected, we'll continue to reach out and get families on School G and we have School G training with both the teachers and the parents to try to help them move along in that as well. Kindergarten registration, it's been advertised in the paper and we're now taking registration for next year's kindergarten classes. And she wanted to touch on that, she also took a tour of the buildings and sites and appreciated the opportunity and got lots of feedback from staff on, on that as well. High school.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Do you know if the School G training is going to involve the check and connect coordinators too?
I believe so.
Okay.
High school, they had Miss Minnesota here, Rachel Evangelisto, she talked about her experiences and learning about her Native American heritage, so Chaz, our EDN coordinator helped set that up and got into a whole bunch of classes, got to meet some students and have to speak to some classes, so that was a neat opportunity for our kids. The third quarter midterms were just sent out the week of February twenty-first. They're projecting forty-one graduates for June second, asking that Bob and Danielle sit on the stage for that event as well to hand out the diplomas. Betsy Carroll, art and photography, she's hoping to add a college in the schools course for next year, she did an application with Minnesota North College. She also just got recently appointed to the Perkitch Center of Arts Board, and so that was a really good thing to see as well. Next year's schedules are close to being done, they're changing a little bit of the middle level things to incorporate STEM in grade seven and eight, intro to Spanish in eighth grade, and intro to technology in eighth, and metal shop in eighth as well, so tweaking the rotation kind of to match students' needs and requests of how we're evolving and changing. So those were his updates. If I can, I'll try to answer any question you have. Mr. Pradeen?
Mr. Pradeen.
Good evening, everybody. Couple of updates here, the lower half of the auditorium wall, we've now completed with that patchwork and getting ready to paint that, so getting that cleaned up here before all the spring activities go through the auditorium, be nice. LBC has completed our annual ELU, which is Emergency Unit Inspection, so those, the power goes out, those are all the little units that pop on, so that's been completed now. Working on a security and fire panel, communications from ANAL to looking into cell communications, which is NFP twenty-sixteen standard, so as we're switching over our phones here in your future, looking at, trying to make that a little bit better point overall.
Do we do have a new date and timeline on the phones?
It was March twenty-eighth, I think it was, on that, so we're supposed to have all things switched over, right, so.
Great, yeah.
Pass our fingers on that one. And then I completed their annual site survey and so working through some of the recommendations and corrections and then any trains that are upcoming there, so those are, some of those are in your packets there, so. And then lastly, there again, picking back up what Mr. Owen said with the school, school tours, it's just nice to go and see professional facilities, maintenance in the school as well and that's all, this is kind of the, some of the takeaways there, let's see what's working. Any questions?
You did have one more update for them that happened over the weekend, if you're aware.
So in a main rules gymnasium, we did have a leak that happened on Friday off of one of the radiators, it was the condensate line was feeding back forming a steam leak coming down the wall, and so we had to isolate that in order to fix it. John's Controls was going to be here today, they had vehicle trouble getting up here, but we have the warmer temps, it's helped us so that it's not running as hard and so we, right now the leak has stopped, but we were monitoring that over the weekend as far as towels and trying to refund all that water, any water to keep it from getting under the floor, some did get underneath there, but doesn't look like any damages and right now we're pressing our fingers at everything, so.
That's up in the balcony, well, it's actually right across.
This is on the north wall, between the first, between the two baskets, so you have your west end basket and then your first, right, come back. So then once we, when we go to do that fix, we want to put isolation valves and so kind of make that a little bit better for next time if we ever have instances coming up in the future, so systematically going down the line, but again, for right now, we just need to get this fixed and, and, so we're hoping everything was all in our way, so.
Any other questions for Mike at all? Any other questions for Mike at all? Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, moving on to item six, the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the February thirteen, two thousand twenty three. Regular reading, we have a motion, so.
Support.
By Mark, support by Danielle, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, moving on to personnel. Item A is a motion to accept the resignation for purpose of retirement. For Marie Lubovic, music teacher, effective June second, two thousand and twenty three. Do we have a motion? Motion by Jackie.
Support.
Support by Cindy. Comments or questions?
Thank her for everything.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have been eliminated, eliminated, so I will see. A motion to approve the hiring of Ebony Johnson to job number two fifteen. Business manager, effective February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty three. And she does have an amended contract that leaves in your packet. Do we have a motion?
Support.
Motion is by Jackie, we have a support. I'm going to show. Comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment on the proposed. Contract. And I, I think at times. We get into the habit of just moving the same contract forward with the same. Benefits or something, the same language. The one concern that I have. Out of these. These contracts is the. Oh, I think it's the termination notice that they're only. They only have to give. Oh, there you go, amended one. Employment provided on form ninety, you know, it's okay, perfect. He said two weeks before. Does Ms. Johnson meet all the requirements that was posted?
To the best of our knowledge. Well, from what I gather, they interviewed several candidates and she came out on top.
So like any of the hires, we would wait for a background check to come in or. That's part of the agreement.
So background check hasn't?
Been applied for. In the past, it was two weeks lately, it's been about three weeks before we received.
Can we ask what her qualifications, I mean, has she, has she done school by now?
She's working on a degree right now, that would be. An advanced degree and that's part of the area, not necessarily school, but. Business management, financial, H R.
And when will she have that?
Just. December of twenty four. Ten year. Twenty four, I think, is in year. Year one, we'll have it. It's a two-year program.
Does she have any knowledge in big projects, like what we have going on with the school?
Not that I'm aware as far as like construction.
Okay.
No.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I would just, you know, have to say that. I just, everybody needs to remember how closely we're at a disaster without having somebody there. And yet, she's gonna need training, no doubt about it. But at least she'll get started on it and we have hitting till June thirty yet. So I don't want to fall into that disaster again like we had before. We got hitting to bail us out, and if they didn't, I don't know where we would be, so. Just thought.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess I'll pose this question to Superintendent Harmon. Would. This person, Ms. Johnson? Would she be working, would she be, for now, would she be staffed over there, maybe?
So I believe it would start with ARC, once ARC gets a little more organized, also Masbo training. Would also be another area and then most definitely working. With business services.
So how does that work with her schooling, all the training and schooling?
Currently is full-time employed and going to school.
And I know you probably haven't discussed this with what. Superintendent and the business manager over there, but. Possibility of. Some type of consulting basis. At least for a little bit. After July one.
So we still have an agreement in place with Kristen Hoheisel that she's done a reach out and introduction.
Okay.
She's willing to help and support. It's certainly something if we needed to, we could definitely explore. We have a big chunk of time right now to onboard and do the best we can to. Hopefully get up and running and up to speed. Getting to ARC might be a little more challenging until they get through their hurdles, so we might have to do things in a little different order than normally we would have done.
Yeah, they're usually so ready to do all the training.
Yes.
They're handwriting the checks.
Mr. Chair, one other question, I guess. And I truly believe that this question goes hand in hand with the business manager's position. Were there other candidates on the other position, the H R payroll specialists that?
I don't know, I wasn't involved in the.
Have been considered, or was there more than one candidate, or?
There were multiple candidates that applied for both. Positions, we reached out to. Five of them for each interview with one person that couldn't make the date work and withdrew. So we originally were going to interview five and five. And there were more applicants than that, that either didn't meet the criteria. Or applied and said, I'll only do this job if it's remote, different factors like that. So they were all screened. As soon as they would apply and then some never completed their full application, so. They would apply on, say, Indeed, and then the redirect would be to our website and they would never complete that portion.
Typical indeed.
But for each candidate, they were reached out to personally to redirect. To apply.
Okay. Do you have any other questions or comments on the contract for Ebony Johnson? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Upstain.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay, thank you. Item D is a motion to accept the resignation of, from Bailey Jacobson, E C F E classroom assistant, effective March third. Two thousand and twenty three, do we have a motion? Motion by Mark?
Support.
Support by Jackie. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E is a motion to approve the hiring of Brittany Randy Larson. To job number two nineteen, E C F E classroom assistant, effective February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three. Okay? Motion by Shelley, support by Jackie. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to administrative business, item A is accept the American Indian A P A C and district compliance documentation. And resolution of conference as presented. Leanne Johnson.
So last year, that did not get. Put in on time and we did not receive the federal funds because of that. Now that we have a person in the in the place. Has had their regular meetings and documentation and done all the work, he's done a nice job of this, so. It did get approved, which is great, so moving forward, we should be mentioned.
Do we have a motion?
Support.
Or by Jackie? Support by Danielle. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B is a motion to approve the communication and branding proposal in the amount of forty seven thousand two hundred dollars. From Barbara Darlin of Darlin Marketing Solutions LLC, as presented. Do we have a motion?
Can I make a request to table this until we actually get to talk to her to see what they want to bring? And why we need this, because I'm not understanding why we need to spend fifty thousand.
I would also second that motion, because I was gonna ask that question as well, because I I would like to know more why we need. A bit of, I guess, this service.
And why are we rebranding Chisholm, I don't like that.
It just seems like we might need fifty thousand dollars for something else at some point, so I'm just at a little bit of a tight one sometimes.
Who's the previous contractor?
The Darlin Group.
Darlin. And they went for after?
That was a whole new proposal.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, initially they were.
Yeah, and I understood that, I said, I just don't know what that after market.
So I I I make a motion to table it, even to table it for the working session. So we can talk about it and try to talk with them.
Motion to table is a motion available? Accepted by Jackie. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Tabled. Okay, item C. Motion to, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take all these policies and one spell swoop and make a vote. Item C is a motion to approve policy number four oh one equal employment opportunity. Item D is a motion to approve policy number four oh two disability nondiscrimination. Item E is a motion to approve policy number four oh three. Discipline, suspension, and dismissal of school district employees. Item F is a motion to approve policy number four oh four, employment background checks. Item G, a motion to approve policy number four oh five, veterans preference. Item H is a motion to approve policy number four oh six, public and private personnel data inform. Item I is a motion to approve policy number four oh seven, employee right to know, exposure to hazardous substances. Item J, a motion to approve policy number four oh eight, subpoena of a school district employee. Item K is a motion to approve policy number four oh nine. Employee publications, instructional materials, inventions, and creations. Item L, a motion to approve policy number four twelve. Expense reimbursement and item M is a motion to approve policy number eight oh seven, health and safety, and. These are all N S B A policies that we put in our book. So I'm looking for a motion to approve those policies, motion is by Cindy.
Support.
Support by Danielle, comments or questions?
Yep, Mr. Chair, just one question on. But I guess some of these that need training, especially like four oh six, I believe. Veterans preference. And working hiring committee or whoever looks at applications has that type of training. And also four oh seven, employee right to know. I'm not. I'm not going to hold these down, I just want. You know, even that four oh seven should also include. Your janitorial staff or teaching staff, any staff has to go into a room that has been affected by somebody who's got. Airborne pathogens or infectious agents. But sometimes they're sent to the rooms, you don't want any of that. Everyone's been infected.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. To approve those policies, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item nine is discussion, nothing underneath there. Moving on to information, you have in your packet all the comments and groups that InGenSA and E R I had meetings with. There for your review. Some very, I mean, these are things that I just enjoy because. Staff's involved and they're getting input and stuff like that, and all I can say is. You know, I know that I believe InGenSA is gonna listen to them and if anything is possible, we'll get put in, you know. Within reason, I get that, so. Again, those are for your. For your perusal and. Have some good reading for people. Next is the I E A site visit summary. Mike, if you, I mean, you have anything on just a summary of what they did?
No, just something that you guys can read right through that and.
Yeah. Okay.
And then some of the things that they flag are just an ongoing, you know, we continually need to work towards safety and precaution, whether it's. Looking at an outlet or a guard on a item in the shop, and so we continue to work with them on fixing some of those. Okay. And they did do their sampling?
Yep, so the. River system, the wet and water. That's what we're reading, results on that.
And then prior to that, they did an air test? Okay. Thanks, Mike.
They have a title in their report, due to be completed by February twenty twenty two eight. So.
Okay. Reminder, we have a working session on March thirteenth at four o'clock with InGenSA and E R I, going over a few things. And then we also have the. Hackenite bill update, which is in the packet. And finally, the enrollment numbers. Kind of keep it short, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I got some more things that I, you know, as you look through that, there are some recommendations that have been done on past or non-required areas such as that. Letting out a water testing and maybe they can read on some of those.
And some just depend on when you're up in the rotation, three year, five year, two year, so. So those are additional costs that we pay for those services.
Was there a little more discussion March eighth?
Okay, March eighth is at City Hall, which is City Council, at six thirty.
Marching six thirty at City Hall?
Yep, and then, like I said, the thirteenth is at four o'clock, right before our regular meeting. I'll work on InGenSA and E R I.
Mr. Chair, just a question as to City Hall's request for a working session. Items of discussion are?
Two things. You did?
Yeah, it was the. Police district and the.
The plant swap and bus barn potential locations.
I think you said that to it.
And our working sessions also gonna include the Darlin Group discussion, is that correct?
Can we add that to Darlin, I won't be here for the five o'clock school board meeting, I'll have to leave after the working session that day.
Yes, yes.
I mean, if we could talk about it at the working session and then. You guys can vote on it at the school board meeting room. But just to understand why we need it and.
I wonder their four P M.
Four P M on the thirteenth.
Because right now we have, you're gonna talk about the bus barn, we have H S updates, so just put.
Yeah, if you could add that to the working session. And see if they can at least join us, even if it's via Zoom to join us, if they can't drive here and get, who knows, whatever it's gonna do, it's March.
Okay. Any other information from members?
Go ahead. Yes, if we can get the formal quotes by then, I know they kind of have some brush strokes. strokes, so, so we can add that as well. The pool, filtration system.
The new one that we all wish for?
Yeah.
Just so you know, I did send in an inquiry to my candidate, what her name, um, the Zos, McKnight Foundation, the Zos's ex-wife, she has a foundation that gives to school districts and just ask very generic question, you know, types of funding that they do. And I did that last week.
Never hurts to ask.
And I did look under the federal shovel-ready projects, whether they're funding, there is for education, it's very specific. It mostly is about career in tech ed and technology. And it said the only construction part of it would be minor construction updates to house moves.
How much? Sonic pads and just.
So how much technology do we need for?
Work with that angle.
But it did not have other options, but we did, I did look.
And she's got various different funding combinations. Doesn't hurt.
So the other thing in your packet was workshop opportunities for phase three. List time to do virtual or in person, if you want to drive to take cloud.
Take cloud? Let's shoot it go.
Okay. Any chance to better bit of the group? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I like the motion.
I'll support it.
Motion by Danielle, supported by Jackie. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Does it now mean that I abstained? That contract shouldn't Cindy have to sign at them?